Call to order, our November 4th County Council meeting and please.
Yes, Jeff.
Roll call.
Brad Bieber?
Here.
Steve Schwartz?
Present.
Rick McKinney?
Present.
Ken Alexander?
Present.
Amy Masalomani?
Okay, and that was a no from Fred, no answer, so we have six of seven.
We have six.
All right, and invocation and pledge will be done by Brad Bieber tonight.
Let's just have a moment of silence and remember all of our people who are in the armed forces who might be in harm's way this evening. Thank you, now we'll have the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then first order is reading approving our minutes, we have the joint meeting with the council and commissioners.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Robin and Dawn, do we need, we need to do a roll call because of those two? I think that's what we have to do.
We're gonna, we're gonna do a roll call. So, Ken Alexander?
Yes.
Brad Bieber?
Aye.
Aye.
Steve Schwartz?
Aye.
That passes unanimously, thank you. Then we have B, minutes of our 2021 budget final adoption.
So moved.
Second. Second.
All those in favor, roll call.
Alexander?
Aye.
Bieber?
Aye.
Masalomani?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Abstain.
And that passes, thank you very much. Open up for public comments. Seen none, we close, public comments. Under Committee Officer Reports, the first thing I have is I wanted to distribute some new face masks that our health department has put out and they have a little bit of a humor, it says show some class and the class stands for C, check your child's temperature every morning, L, lead by example, let your child see you wearing a mask, modeling good social behavior, A, avoid crowds like slumber parties, car pools, play dates are discouraged, S, schedule a test if you have COVID symptoms, and S, stay home until you receive your test results or you're feeling better. So, wanted to do our part and distribute these to the council members, Amy, Jeff, Fred, we'll put these in a box for you so you guys can get them at your next distribution. That's all I had, Amy?
I have nothing else to say.
Thank you. Highway, we did not meet. Finance?
I was hoping to have Mr. Reuter here this, this evening just to talk to us, he couldn't make any previous engagements, he put it on his calendar to be here in December, so in December we'll get words of wisdom from Mike Reuter.
All right. Personnel?
We did not meet and we will address some personnel issues on further down in our agenda.
Okay, thank you. Miss Alanius, we had board appointments and, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Which ones are available or what that would be, I'd certainly like to give a, you know, him availability for 30 days notice so that he can do those so that we would have no issues in reappointing people or appointing people for this coming December if everybody's okay with that instead of waiting till the new year.
All right, well that leads us into the topic of, we have one advert, or one on here for the Clay Township Regional Waste Development that Fred was, say sponsoring or suggesting we reappoint Amanda Foley. Or she would be, she's replacing Ray Nielsen, excuse me. Yeah, she was, she was on it before and then we replaced her with Mike Shaver and then Shaver resigned Ray Nielsen and so apparently he doesn't want to be reappointed and Amanda would be coming back, so Fred's not here to speak on it, so.
So is the plan to get a list of everything that needs appointment and do it in December or do it in January?
Well, we've always done it in December and we had, the list was in our last, or it's in this packet.
Yeah, the list was in this package and they have it highlighted which ones are coming, are falling off. My only, my only concern would be is that we advertise whatever we can to the, to the public, but the liaison positions, I think we should probably delay those until January from, with, with new people coming on to the council.
My belief is, my belief is that I don't think we need to pay to have anything advertised, I don't know how many people really look in the newspaper and so forth, but if any council member would like to put it out on social media or just talk to the individuals about it, about who'd be interested, that they could send things in to Robin and Dawn and then our president certainly could meet with Robin and Dawn and have it organized for the next meeting and have it out maybe in our packets for review, I'd be good with that, but I do think we should go ahead and do it.
As a point of clarification, Jeff, I'm not advocating advertising in the paper.
Do we have a paper?
Okay, well again, try to go forward, how about, since Fred's not here, we'll just hold off on Amanda's unless I'm okay with her, but.
I think that because it's on our agenda, I'm okay with this particular one under the circumstances that exist.
Okay, so you want to make a motion?
I will make the motion for.
I'll second.
Amanda Foley.
And Amy just seconded it, so, roll call.
Yes, Alexander?
I'll abstain.
Bieber?
Aye.
Jeff Hearn?
Aye.
Masalomani?
Aye.
McKinney?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
That passes. And then, I had distributed everybody for Tom Clover, again, he's a Democrat, so I think it's a unique situation and he's already been on for eight months by the end of the year and so I would make the motion to appoint him for a full four-year term to the parks board.
I'll second the motion.
Out of curiosity, we discussion point, why are we awarding appointments that don't expire until the December?
They don't expire till the end of the year.
Yeah, it's just for, not that I want to say expediency, just to get it done, so that individual, you know, again, he's the incumbent, I think it's going to be hard to find another Democrat in the next 30 days, so why not, and then.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not trying to say that his qualifications are not support, like we're not there to do this role, I'm just wanting to know, it just doesn't seem like a procedural thing that if we're doing these things in December, why aren't we doing them in December? That's all I have to say.
Oh, no, no, I hear you, I'm just, I think it's flexible, we, I mean, there's no ironclad that we wait until December, so we've got it on the agenda, we've had it, so.
I don't see it.
Huh?
I don't see it.
Board appointments expiring 12/31/2020?
That'd be all of them, wouldn't it?
Well, yeah.
Ken has a concern, I don't care.
Okay. Right?
Yep.
Ken Alexander?
I'll abstain.
Brad Bieber?
Aye.
Fred Glenn, Jeff Hearn? Amy Masalomani?
Aye.
Aye.
Steve Schwartz?
Aye.
That pass, did we get an answer from Jeff or was he just blank?
No, and he said he might have to step away.
Okay, okay, so that passes, we have five, okay. All right, so yeah, we had four, and then we also have Glenn Schwartz's letter requesting to be reappointed to the port authority.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call please.
Alexander?
Abstain.
Bieber?
I'm abstaining.
Glenn, Jeff Hearn? Masalomani?
Aye.
Rick McKinney?
Aye.
Steve Schwartz?
Aye.
Did you get an answer from Jeff?
No.
Well, I'm wondering if we'll come back to that then, because it's three, two, and, yeah, yeah. We'll come back to it because in attendance, it's just, like he went to the bathroom or whatever, so we'll come back to that.
Hey, verify, he's not on mute, I don't believe.
No, but he said he may had to, he may have to step away because he's at a clinic with his son.
Oh, okay.
Okay. All right, unfinished, we have nothing, tabled, again, number A, the Commissioners 250,000 additional for tourism grant match, we were notified by Brenda Myers that that has been denied by the EDA, so she is in favor of us untabling it and then.
I'll make a motion to untable A.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call.
I'll make a motion for.
Wait a minute, we gotta do the roll call?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, Alexander?
Aye.
Bieber?
Aye.
Glenn, Hearn, Masalomani?
Aye.
McKinney?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
All right, that's untabled.
I'll make a motion, you can only make a motion in the affirmative, right, I'll make a motion to approve it.
All right, that dies for lack of a second, so that's off the agenda. Then we have, go down to number D, Resolution CC 1007 2020-01, we'd move to untable that.
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Alexander?
Aye.
Bieber?
Aye.
Glenn, Hearn, Masalomani?
Aye.
McKinney?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
All right, that's untabled. So I want to make a motion to.
My promotion.
Dies for lack of a second, thank you. Then we have new business, approval of vendor claims.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Alexander?
Aye.
Bieber?
Aye.
Glenn, Hearn, Masalomani?
Aye.
McKinney?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
That passes, thank you very much, and. B, Resolution CC 11-04-2020-01, a resolution concerning the purchase of real estate for the 146th Street Allisonville Road Intersection Project, I believe this is some proactive buying that the highway department's going to. This is required anytime we're spending over $25,000.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Ken?
Second.
Second, Brad, roll call please.
Alexander?
Aye.
Bieber?
Aye.
Fred Glenn, Hearn, Masalomani?
Aye.
McKinney?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
That passes, thank you. Grant appropriations, number one, Fund 8902 CARES Act, we have an ISS transfer of $8,640.
Well, since we're having to do these roll calls, let me suggest that we put A and B together.
Okay.
Second.
Did this, did you do the motion on that?
Amy did the second.
Oh, you motioned it, who motioned it first?
I did.
He did.
Okay, all right. You got that okay, Robin, Dawn? Roll call please.
Alexander?
Aye.
Bieber?
Aye.
Glenn, Hearn, Masalomani?
Aye.
McKinney?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
That passes, thank you. Number two, Fund 9143, calendar year 2020 Court Decision Reduction Grant appropriation
So moved.
Second.
Roll call please.
Alexander?
Aye.
Bieber?
Aye.
Glenn, Hearn, Masalomani?
Aye.
McKinney?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
That passes, I'm just curious, you know, why do we have these reverse copies?
I don't know why that happened.
Just looked so unusual, like I'm looking at negatives or something, thank you. Number three, Fund 9144, 2019-2020 Pretrial Services, and we have an appropriation and a transfer.
I'll make the motion and put A and B together.
I'll second.
Is that okay, Robin, Dawn, okay? Roll call please.
Alexander?
Aye.
Bieber?
Aye.
Glenn, Hearn, Masalomani?
Aye.
McKinney?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Passes, thank you. Number four, Fund 9154 Veterans Problem Solving Court Appropriation, $10,000.
Judge Bardot? Is that your court? The Jews, okay.
And it's appropriating a new veterans' court grant for 2021.
So moved.
Second. Roll call please.
Alexander?
Aye.
Bieber?
Aye.
Glenn, Hearn, Masalomani?
Aye.
McKinney?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
Before we go to D, let's back up and I think Jeff Hearn's available to do his vote for the Hoosier Port Authority.
So Jeff, A or N? Yes, Glenn Schwartz for Hoosier Heritage Port, uh huh.
Yes, aye.
All right, thank you, Jeff, that passes four, and two abstains and one non here, thank you, thanks, Ken.
Yep.
D, Ordinance 1104 2020-A, approving CARES Act reimbursement for public health and safety payroll costs, and we are asked to suspend the rules and approve on first reading and to do that we need a unanimous vote, so.
So what is the financial impact of passing?
Motion first, I'm sorry.
I'll motion to approve.
Second.
Is that to suspend the rules?
Yes. All in favor, roll call for suspending the rules.
So, Ken and Steve, okay, so we have Ken Alexander?
Aye.
Brad?
Aye.
Glenn, Hearn?
Aye.
There he is. Masalomani?
Aye.
McKinney?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
That passes, thank you. And now the motion for the actual ordinance. I'll make the motion.
I'll prove, I mean, I'll second.
Ken seconds, and now Brad, your question.
Robin, is, is there a financial impact or is this just a ordinance?
This is the ordinance enabling us to ask for reimbursement for payroll.
Okay.
Uh, roll call please.
Alexander?
Aye.
Bieber?
Aye.
Glenn, Hearn?
Aye.
Masalomani?
Aye.
McKinney?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
That passes, thank you very much. Now we will open the public hearing concerning additional appropriations, and the first one is under County General, and we have an auditor transfer of $77,431.
So moved.
Second.
And this is a result, you said the reclassifications approved by us in June. Roll call please.
Alexander?
Aye.
Bieber?
Aye.
Glenn, Hearn?
Aye.
Masalomani?
Aye.
McKinney?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
That passes. Number two, Commissioners Additional, 110,000. I believe this is for postage for election items related.
Second. Little trivia here, in 2016, we sent out 11,409, this year we sent out 46,330, so quite a difference in four years, what a difference four years make?
Alexander?
Aye.
Bieber?
Aye.
Glenn, Hearn?
Aye.
Masalomani?
Aye.
McKinney?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
That passes, how about we combine three and eight since they're both under a dollar? Is that okay?
It's okay with me.
I'll make the motion, Ken.
Are you making the motion?
I made the motion, Ken seconded, roll call on those, please.
Alexander?
Aye.
Bieber?
Aye.
Glenn, Hearn? Masalomani?
Aye.
McKinney?
Aye.
Schwartz?
Aye.
That passes, thank you. And now we have Court Administration 144 Amendments 20 and 21.
Our new court administrators here.
I'm sorry, we had the motion to approve.
You made the motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Brad seconded.
Do you want to hear from her?
Sure, why not?
Oh, that's yours?
That's, that's judges.
Blonde-haired lady. Okay.
We don't want you to make the trip for nothing, Judge.
That's right. You, you want some FaceTime here, right?
No, I don't care if you have. I absolutely am only here if you have questions, because I think everything's self-explanatory.
Alright.
So, this is about our court reporter leaving. All the functions of the job. Actually was a court reporter before she came to work for me six years ago. Uh, for some thirty-four, thirty-five years in different courts. So I want to replace the one who left with her, but to do it, uh, at the start of the pay grade, she would pay about a two thousand dollar pay reduction. And this is. Uh, it uses the, um, uh, formula that you use for doing that.
So there's no financial impact?
Only financial impact there really is, is on the other end of this, because the position I will have to replace is a lower pay grade. So I will be hiring in somebody at less money than.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Pretty good answer.
Uh, roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Beaver.
Aye.
Glenn, Hearn. Masalomani.
Aye.
McKinney.
Aye.
Swartz.
Aye.
Thank you, that passes. Buildings and grounds, number five, um. I would combine them, Brad, but I'd, I'd like to talk to them separately.
Probably, probably not a good idea. Here's where the real fun starts.
So, the first one, we have an additional for forty thousand operating supplies.
I'll motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Wait a minute.
But we got, we had discussion, man.
Forty thousand, the building year-end needs.
Oh, I thought that was these other projects.
No, no, no. Operating supplies.
I, is that forty thousand building, um, building needs, or is that, that matches?
That is, uh, so basically it's going to be your toilet paper, it's going to be the supplies to make it through. Price increase that's happening and we're being told it takes three, five months to get certain quantities and stuff. We are ordered now to restock up. We're sitting at about four months' worth of materials on hand. I order it now. I get it, get it coming. I'm good to go. Price increases over here is costing. Helps offset that and gets us through the next section of this.
It just confused me because it was matched exactly with the lump sum that was in the next proposal. For the fee. That's why.
Oh.
Because I was like, alright.
Roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Beaver.
Aye.
Glenn, Hearn. Masalomani.
Aye.
McKinney.
Aye.
Swartz.
Aye.
That passes, thank you very much. Second additional, one hundred and two thousand five hundred dollars.
So, um.
Wait, Steve, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Motion approved.
Thank you, Ken.
Second.
Alright.
So what this is for, let me take this off, I look like a fool with it like that, um, is the possibility of moving, uh, in the Humane Society section of the building that will be vacated. This will be for the engineering design and to make sure the three different groups would get what they need. That would be soil and water, weights and measure, and currently in there is, um, low-cost bay neuter, who also needs a little more space at the same time. Uh, this would get all the engineering, all the engineering planning and design estimates. I did have them remove out of the cost. Roughly a little over twenty thousand dollars of geotech, uh, architecture materials, I mean, yeah, the geotech out of there. Uh, the presentation, renderings, the structural engineering allowance, and FFNE. There's no reason to have that in there at this stage till we find out what the total cost is going to be to do that, if you agree that that's what needs to be done. I was asked to, to get this together. It was my recommendation of the Commissioners. This was worth, that's what would get soil and water and weights and measures out of that building that was built in nineteen forty. It's a block structure, which Dawn, Robin know the building well. That actually needs to be tore down. They actually worked in there at one point with the Highway Department. Brad, correct me if I'm wrong, that was part of the airport at one time.
I don't think so.
It wasn't?
I don't think so, because the airport was not built until after World War Two.
You know, Mr. Woods, if there's still a tree growing through the floor in the boardroom?
Yes, there is, it does, and we cut it out, we fill it in.
Is it an invasive species?
It is.
How'd you know? Because soil and water has pointed that out to us several times.
It's growing, it's healthy.
You know, I've had some great questions from all of you, right? And what it is, is soil and water and weights and measures need to be moved out of that building. We are going to have vacated spots, areas that need to be done. This would allow us to move other county agencies into a county building that will have vacancies in it. That is why I'm bringing that to you. I've had, I've heard a lot of different hears and there's and why, why are we doing this? Was my recommendation to the Commissioners. The Commissioners have asked me to bring it to you, and that's why I'm doing it.
And I, I appreciate that, Steve, and I think I distributed everybody an email. Part of the history, about thirteen years ago or so roughly, we were asked to approve five hundred thousand dollars to, uh, make some improvements to that building on behalf of low-cost spay neuter. And we had a, uh, say, a, a well-known veterinarian appear before us and make the pitch that he has a private business, they compete with him. And he did not feel it was fair for us to subsidize them for half a million dollars. So at that point, we did not do it. And again, that was a request at that time from the Commissioners for it. So, I'm personally opposed to doing anything to help another county department.
So, so. So my suggestion is, which you need to talk with Commissioners, but we can do what we need to do, get this done, to do what we need to do for solid waste and weights and measures. They need to move. And there's the money issues. I can't give you a good actual cost. I gave you an estimate earlier. This was what it'll take to get it done. I appreciate you hearing me.
This is just engineering.
Yes, engineering, the design.
This is to get a cost. So I would say to you. It would, you know, we need to know a price, but I would not infer that getting money for engineering means you get money for the project.
Sir, and also, um, just for you're aware of. I'm not very well-liked by this company sometimes, but that's fine. In there, the structural engineering allowance, if needed, the new construction, I had them remove that. The presentation, I had them remove that, FFNE, design documentation, and the geotech, just because of that purpose. I know, and we, we all know, times are going to be tough. I get this done and you say, we're not going to move forward, that's fine, but I'll have it done for when the time is there to move forward.
And I'm, I'm all in favor of moving soil and water and weights and measures, um, and as I said, I, I think there's other places to move them, but.
Yeah, and I, and I looked at those and quite, and Health Department has to expand. That's one of the reasons that the corner's moving and it, we have, we have tough times. But we're, we're trying as a department to make accommodations what we have.
Oh, you guys are doing fantastic.
And I appreciate, and I know every one of you up there, uh, really well, and I appreciate everything you do. No matter how you vote on this, I'm doing my job and you're doing your job.
Absolutely.
Either way, Steve, I, I think, you know, my opinion is that the building needs rehab work anyway, whatever we do to it. And that building's what, eighteen years old?
Two thousand and six is when it was built.
Okay, yeah, it definitely needs rehab, whichever way we go.
There's certain service issues there.
Part of this review process, I would imagine, would include them doing an evaluation on whether this is a pro, a, a property that, that should be renovated, I'm assuming. Is that, would that be part of their review?
Correct. Uh, with the, have you, with the Humane Society the way it is, my recommendation, no matter what, will be to renovate that side of it. With the oils in the, in the building itself, yes. And we have equipment that I can't get parts for now. Um, that SEMCO unit, Mr. Beaver, if you remember that big.
I haven't seen it.
Yeah, you can't get parts for it. Um, and the only way I can get parts is out of Ohio and they're remanufactured parts. So I have to do something with it no matter what.
Well, I, I think, I mean, obviously this project wasn't on the priority list from, from my, from what we talked about, but obviously this is a planning exercise to look forward. What, what it would take to get done, and I'm, I'd be supportive of, of that, but the, but as far as moving forward as a project.
Oh, I understand.
That would be something we'd have to hold on.
And that's a discussion for you and the Commissioners. Mine is to get it to that point and then everybody to make their decision what they need to do.
I could just interject one thing, if that's okay. Um, can I believe what I heard you say is, is what my kind of thought process was? If I go back and think about our joint session that we had discussing priorities and projects, I think my, if I look at the date of when this proposal was given, it was the twelfth day of October. So this was clearly something that was on the agenda, but I don't feel that we were given, um, the information upfront. I support ultimately, um, doing this phase, but again, I, does not mean that I'm in support of the project moving forward thereafter. I just would like the communication to be a little bit more transparent in the future when we have meetings of all of us together.
Mr. Solmyrod, um, that paperwork that I originally gave you with the projects that I found that were a necessity to get done, that was on there as a whole building project. And I didn't feel that bringing a whole building project without having a design or a discussion over it first was the right way to do it.
Think you're missing the point, Steve.
Thank you for that.
Yes.
We asked for a list of projects.
Okay.
This one wasn't on there.
It was, there's a grand total, like two million dollars.
There was, it was on, yeah, that project was on there as a whole dollar amount with an estimated cost.
And we didn't talk about it in detail, you know, it was just sort of glossed over.
I did have it on there as a whole project, the whole estimated cost.
Right, yeah, you did, yeah, yeah, you did, yeah.
And, and I would just say this, I don't disagree with the fact that it was included, inclusive of the, of the big picture project. But when you're looking at it now, asking for the money in November, and we talked about it in October, right? I guess that's, knowing that you, I think we were thinking outward, right? It wasn't an imminent need of thinking, you know, four weeks later that you'd be asking for the, the design phase. So that, that's my only thing, is just.
And I understand, and I apologize for that. I should have made that a little bit more clear.
Any other questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Beaver.
Aye.
Glenn, Hearn, Masalomani.
Aye.
McKinney.
No.
Swartz.
Aye.
That passes, thank you, Steve. Want to stay in?
I would, actually.
Bask in glory for the next one.
Well, we all should, every council member up there that helped with this, right?
Yeah.
Uh, the solar project, we have a, it's a reduction, it's a loan payment portion of it, which we haven't had to add to utilities. We've had a twelve percent across the board on electric alone, and we're meeting our obligations even with, with that, with solar.
I thought our, I thought our rate was locked in. It's not, it's.
We have certain, we have certain buildings were locked in, certain buildings aren't locked in. So it's twelve percent across the board on electric, and let me tell you what, it's getting ready to go up again, is what we heard.
Okay.
They requested nineteen percent.
Second.
Thank you. Steve, fantastic job.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, everybody.
Alrighty, thank you. All in favor, or roll calls, excuse me, sorry.
Alexander.
Aye.
Beaver.
Aye.
Glenn, Hearn, Masalomani.
Aye.
McKinney.
Aye.
Swartz.
Aye.
That passes, thank you. Next, we have ISS transfer. Separate ones, um. Want to combine both of these together, five thousand and then two thousand eighty.
I'll motion to, to combine the two.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call.
Alexander.
Aye.
Beaver.
Aye.
Glenn, Hearn, Masalomani.
Aye.
McKinney.
Aye.
Swartz.
Aye.
That passes, thank you. Sheriff has two items, um. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Uh, I ha, I, I think maybe, yeah, there's a few things on here. One forty-four amendments are sergeant, honor department retired, so this is to promote a new sergeant, backfill the positions behind that. And then we are switching the, one of the task force that we're involved in. Uh, the second thing is the specialty pay guidance. We're expanding one of our specialty teams. We'd like to add additional personnel to that. Uh, the purpose for that is crowd control. And then the third is a transfer to cover overtime costs in the jail. And also a small portion of that is to cover the last paycheck of my salary.
Uh-oh.
Wait a minute.
It's confusing, yeah. I, I think there was a, I think we made a clerical error when the, uh, after the prosecutor's salary was raised last year, that was after budget time, and I don't think this got added to that line item at the time, so. I believe that's why that line's going to be short.
Was the.
Mister, uh, uh, hang on just a minute. Uh, Mr. Jeter, does that, does that pass the smell test as far as you're concerned? Oh.
You're muted.
I'm sorry, say that, say that one more time.
You think, you think the, uh, sheriff is on the up and up with his request here?
No, he's, he's proven himself to be a trustworthy man so far.
Good enough for me.
And Dennis, or Sheriff, the, uh, you said the, uh, riot field control, was that based on issues this summer or anything?
We just want to make sure that we're prepared, so we added personnel and created a new portion of that.
Give them extra money for dealing with that situation.
They've gone through extensive amount of a training, and so there's some requirements to go through it, so this is the language of what training and requirements they would have to get in order to receive the specialty pay, yes.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Beaver.
Aye.
Glenn, Hearn, Masalomani.
Aye.
McKinney.
Aye.
Swartz.
Aye.
Thank you, that passes.
Was that for four A or for all of four?
That was for both of them.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
A, B, and C?
I just wanted to making sure that Robin had that.
That's what I had, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, okay. Um, and then next page, Fund eleven thirty-eight, Team Cap Development Reduction. Thirty-one thousand fifty-nine dollars.
So move.
Second.
Call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Beaver.
Aye.
Glenn, Hearn, Masalomani.
Aye.
McKinney.
Aye.
Swartz.
Aye.
That passes, great. Uh, Fund eleven seventy-six, Highway requesting sixty thousand.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it. Um, and this is, uh, final items on the two hundred and seventy-sixth Street Project Phase Two. Uh, they're closing it out, and there are two change orders having to do with pavement markings and railroad crossings. So, roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Beaver.
Aye.
Glenn, Hearn, Masalomani.
Aye.
McKinney.
Aye.
Swartz.
Aye.
Passes, thank you. And then we have the Fund twelve oh six, Local Health Trust Transfer ten thousand dollars, and this is to pay public relations.
Amy motion, I'll, I'll second.
Amy made a motion.
I'm sorry.
Amy's motion, I second. What was the public relations for?
It's transferring money to pay publicly, I'm going to guess it's dealing with COVID.
Well, I'm sure it is, I just wasn't sure if there was any kind of services or if it's a contract type of situation.
Uh, local trust account. I don't, we don't see anybody from Health Department. Mark, do you know, can I ask, Mark or Dan, do you guys know anything about that? No?
Local Health Trust, was that, what was that for? The ten thousand for public relations?
From the Health Department. Tammy, do you know anything? Is this for you? Supplemental work.
Additional services.
Okay.
The Health Department, they ask.
Probably for the masks.
Okay. All right, roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Beaver.
Aye.
Lynn. Hearn. Masalomani.
Aye.
McKinney.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
That passes, thank you. The Fund 1112, excuse me, Fund 1213, Guardian, Ad Lightum, requesting 25,000. Do you want to join these both together, Amy?
That would be great, yes, actually.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Thank you. So Amy motion, Ken seconded. Additional 25,000, and then a transfer for 8,000. Roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Beaver.
Aye.
Lynn. Hearn. Masalomani.
Aye.
McKinney.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
That passes, thank you. Last item, Fund 4918, Youth Assistance, requesting 4,465.
Second.
Group insurance. Roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Beaver.
Aye.
Lynn. Hearn. Masalomani.
Aye.
McKinney.
Aye.
Schwartz.
Aye.
That passes, thank you. We will close the public hearing on additional appropriations. Announcements, Sheriff, anything?
No, I have none, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Council Attorney, any announcements?
Nothing, nothing added.
Thank you. And Auditor?
I have nothing.
Oh, my gosh. Three for three, all right. Anybody? Mr. Schwartz.
Just wanted to congratulate fellow Councilman Brad Beaver for his reelection. Congratulations, Brad.
Thank you. That is very good, and also our Council Attorney, who was elected to a full term. So very good.
Congratulations.
Anything else? For anybody else?
I'd just like to say that the Elections Office did a wonderful job. I didn't hear any kind of issues that came up. The lines from everything that I heard were moved smoothly, and, and I know that we, we spent a lot of money with the early voting and the mail-in ballots, but at least Hamilton County proved that, that we, we run efficient elections. I was very proud of the staff and the work they did.
I, I second that. I think Beth Scheller and her whole crew did an excellent job with the year that we've been having anyway, and all the problems that go with it.
Election month came to a close.
Yeah.
Not just election day.
In Hamilton County.
Yes, yes, in Hamilton County. All right, well, thank you, everybody. We stand adjourned, thank you.